Good evening, or good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a nice, warm day for the March 19, 2019 meeting. And this is our informal work session of the Amhill County Board of Commissioners. And the first thing on our agenda today, we do have a work session. And this work session today will be a review and a discussion of space needs analysis. And Justin Hoag and Joe Moore will lead the workstation, the work session. Do you have anything to say, Ken?
Yeah, I figured I'd go ahead and start it because I know Justin and Joe are going to dive into the details of what we want to discuss today. It's just a reminder that as part of last year's budget process and the capital improvement plan, we did set aside, we identified funds to do the space needs analysis study. So this is the first part. They've been working on preparing the handout, so, you know, in preparation for putting out an RFP, you know, for the next step. You know, there may be some discussions about whether or not we need to do a full RFP because the city of McMinnville just recently completed something similar. I don't necessarily, in reviewing their materials, whether or not it's truly an apples-to-apples kind of comparison or process. So, you know, so before I hand it over, you know, this is something that was approved, it's something we wanted, we've been wanting to look at. And now I'm going to hand it over to them. You know, we'll probably be back with the art, you know, because it'll be a qualification-based process, just with the rules, and Christian can probably speak a little more to that. But with the rules and the types of firms that do this kind of work, it's not necessarily a full RFP, it's qualification-based. You know, so we may be coming back to the board, depending on what's agreed on for the scope for this because we probably didn't budget enough funds within that capital list to pay for this. I believe the cities was, came in right around $75,000, so. And now I'll turn it over.
Okay, Justin, Joe?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A request was made of staff to provide a summary of the RFP for the space needs analysis consultant, which is provided in your handout. The study includes the buildings located here in the downtown core of McMinnville, as well as a couple of leased buildings outside of the centralized area here, commonly referred to as the Kirby Building and the Newburg Annex. Please note, though, that the condition assessment will not include the leased buildings since they are not county-owned. However, we will be requesting that their use and functionality be assessed. The facility condition assessment, under the heading overview, provides a list of physical features that we are requesting be included in the assessment. And we are also proposing that the ability to meet ADA standards and seismic resilience be evaluated as part of the condition assessment as well. The facility use assessment primarily looks at the needs and the current utilization of spaces occupied by various county programs and provides a list of summarizing various elements to be explored. And then if you move on down to the scope of work on page two, this just simply expands upon the overview and provides greater detail on what the project will focus on. The majority of the list speaks to the condition of the buildings and sites until you reach item seven, which is on page three, where it gets more into assessing the current uses and needs and future demand. And then finally, at the bottom of the page, we have a proposed tentative schedule commencing in May, with project completion slated for the conclusion of this calendar year. So today, we're really just seeking input from the Commission as to whether this is agreeable and its consent to initiate the project following the outline that was provided.
I'll tell you, the initial draft you have here, Justin, looks real, real good to me. But I was just wondering, the county, the second, on the first page, the second county leased properties, don't we have more leased properties than those two listed? I mean, we have part of the old PMC next door, part of that. And I'm concerned that we include, if there's any missing, that we include all of our leased properties in the study.
We did miss that one for across the street. That was a new addition, pretty small space. I'm trying to remember, Silas, how many, that's two offices?
Two thousand.
Two thousand square feet?
Square feet.
Two, two thousand.
It's hard to do a K.
So we'll add that.
And then there's the space across the street here, the facilities uses to store.
On that fourth.
It's actually, yeah, the facilities and clerk's office.
Yeah, that should go in there.
Yeah.
You know, when I, when I read this, when Ken just gave it out, I think it addresses everything that I'd like to see, not only the, the space analysis, but the building, building conditions, you know, what structural problems we may have, the seismic, the seismic problems with some of the buildings we have, or the seismic conditions of some of the things we have. I think this will, by looking at it, this will give us a pretty good, especially where I think it's under the scope of work on item G, which is to calculate the backlogs and maintenance and repair for each facility. Because I think as we look at this, part of the strategy is to bring our facilities up to date, not just for efficiency and space utilization, but what would it cost to bring those up to, up to date. So I think this is a pretty good document so far. But I know we didn't leave public, I understand not putting Public Works in because of the brand-new building. But how about the, the extension building we own now, where OSU Extension is located and where our emergency services is?
We were kind of on the fence on that one, you know, because there are some buildings out there at the Public Works yard that aren't necessarily tied to the public, you know.
Is this looking at all buildings, or just those in the downtown core?
I think it was addressed to all the, all the facilities.
Okay. We were, we were really trying to, you know, but that's a topic for discussion about, you know, again, how large of a scope and, you know, you'll see that we have some exclusions, you know, unlike the city who, they looked at parks and they looked.
Yeah, I don't care about parks.
You know, so we were trying to not, you know, because our parks, properties, you have master planning that takes place with that under the parks. Same thing with transit, you have the transit plan that addresses a lot of the facility's needs, Public Works, and then, you know, not expanding into a lot of the residential treatment homes that we have out there. You know, we decided to bring that in on scope. But if there's, if we need to look at some of the other buildings or out at the Public Works yard, we could, we could roll that into this.
Yeah, I understand not doing any of our housing ones, that, that's perfectly, that's perfectly understandable. But I think when we talk about buildings like the extension building and where we're at, that building is so old, you know, I mean, hell, I think it was here when I first went there, when I was seven years old.
But it was originally in an air.
It was moved in, taken apart, right?
Yeah, so I think those kind of buildings where we do, and a lot of it isn't our staff, you know, we only have one. But I think for us, I think we need to know the condition and need to evaluate that building also.
We can look at that building. The other buildings, like where parks or some of those, those are more maintenance sheds.
That's what I was thinking too, I'm glad you mentioned that.
The metal buildings, yeah, I'm not.
The ones with the cats in them?
Because nobody really work, nobody really works in there. I mean, they're not a, they're more almost a stored shop building than anybody works there.
So we can include the, the former Public Works Admin Building onto the list as well.
Yeah, I think.
And is there any other buildings right off the bat, other than the Newburg Annex, that we lease around, any place around McMinnville? Other than our housing, other than our housing units?
Looked at Silas, Silas, do, do we miss any HHS buildings other?
For office space, from what I can tell, I was looking at my daily notes. So there are the properties that we own for housing projects and/or lease.
Right.
And so it might be nice just to at least count for that, not necessarily make, we might want at least list those out so you can see physically and the number of facilities we're talking about.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, to at least get them on the inventory so we can look at them, but we wouldn't really do any, we wouldn't really do any.
Well, a lot of those we'll already have on the inventory because they'll be on our insurance schedule. And we have appraisals that are done every, you know, two to three years as part of our insurance requirement. So, I mean, we have some of that information, but, but also with some of the discussions on this really being, looking at really operations, office, you know, where we're at, where we, you know, and then, of course, with the courthouse and everything else, that's what we were really trying to, to focus on.
Yeah. Yeah, every once in a while, a judge will sidle up to me and ask me about some improvement to the courthouse, so I'm glad that it's on here.
And he offers a funding to go with it?
Not that I can think of.
You know, until we start seeing, actually see the archive, I think this is a very, very good start.
Yeah, I think so too.
Very?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the timeline would be the other question, if, you know, you know, project completion, we're not sure how much time it's really going to take, you know. You know, this is a lot of buildings that we're looking at, so, you know, we'll get to work on the next step and.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you know, and I, I think that's, if, even if it took a little bit longer than the end of the year, because as part of that, what I'd like to do is, once we get that study information back, we might want to look at it and say, okay, what are the things we really need to address in a short-term period, meaning three to five years? And what are things that may be a 10 to 12 to 15 years? So, so I'd rather do it right the first time and get it all, get it all done, so. And if you think it could be done, of course, you haven't, we don't have the, the timeframe, August, that gives the project commencement, five months, that if they think they can do it, fine, that's, that's, that's okay with me.
Have we ever done anything similar to this, just in terms of how long it would take?
I'm trying to think, the last one was done in 2010?
That's what I think you said.
But it was just a couple buildings, wasn't it?
Neither one of us, and it seemed to be, that one was more focused on courthouse. You know, because we've had these done, it's hard because neither, neither one of us, you know, none of us were in our current roles the last time. But I know there was one done in 2010 and another one in 2006. We have the plans, but I don't necessarily have, you know, the timeframe that it took. There wasn't a lot of narrative in those planning documents. They were more planned than they're.
I think there was a third one about 99 or 2000.
And those really weren't professional space needs analysis, didn't we do those internally, if I remember right?
We had a contractor, we had an architect who did that. Sorry, so I didn't, you know, follow it up. I don't have an estimate on how much time it took to do that.
This is pretty comprehensive.
And if it leads to nothing more, we'll know what, what kind of maintenance and how we are behind on maintenance and what we have to do to bring some of our buildings up to date, so as the useful icons on those, whether we even try to bring them up to date.
And I'm trying to remember if Jeff shared how long it took them to get through their process.
Well, their RFP, they gave them six months, and it was much more comprehensive, I believe, than what we're looking at doing here.
Did he, did he include seismic? That was, he did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just remember him saying, oh, but just to hold, maybe it was that, just to keep the buildings intact so he could get out of them or something. Maybe that was, okay. And they have their numbers back. Exciting.
Have anything else more for Justin or Joe or Ken?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is a good start.
It's a great start.
Appreciate it.
Okay, that concludes our work, our work session for today. So now we'll go to our informal session, and we do have two department updates doing. I don't see Shane here yet, so we'll turn it right over to Silas. You guys come on forward. I see you brought the important person with you this morning, right, Silas?
Absolutely. I invited Lindsay to join us.
I am too. Hi, Lindsay.
Partly because we're going to talk about a couple of things that she's been leading, and partly it's nice when she can make our department updates. She's part of our core leadership team. So good afternoon, I have five things to talk with you about, mostly updates, but one, we do want to get a little bit of input around how you envision us supporting the work going forward. So first thing, just briefly, Justin's here, Joe's here, the Evans remodel is going nicely. We were just over there looking at the space. It's all opened up, the metal stud walls are in and framed, and they are working on getting ready for the HVAC, which is going to be a huge change for us, so that's on track for, at least right now, as we anticipate that completion. Everything's moving as it should be. The other one is about our medically assisted treatment grant award that we've been notified through an email, but not through a contract yet, but I'm excited about it. And we've passed a statement of work back and forth, so this would give us an award for two years. It's actually going to be a little bit less than two years by the time we receive it. And this is monies for the outpatient component. It's going to coordinate really well with the jail-based MAT model that the sheriff has implemented, but it is an outpatient capacity grant, so it will include, once we're awarded, a sub-award to provoke it, provoke and hope to continue some of the recovery support activities that they do, and then some licensed medical time and certified medical assistance time. And as soon as I have that award, it'll be back in front of you, but I'm starting to talk about it because it nests with other projects that we're doing, and it's part of our overall opioid harm reduction strategy that we're running through public health and through the community.
Silas, with the sheriff's MAT grant running out in April, how do you see that impacting your outpatient MAT?
Well, it will be a policy decision for the board unless they're awarded a continuation grant. As I understand it, they're still searching for an opportunity to continue that grant through the Oregon Health Authority. Regardless, the outpatient model needs to happen in the community, and we're already ramping up, so this really just gives us additional capacity. Lindsay's been working closely with the primary care capacity expansion, so we're going to be a center of excellence or a hub for starting people on their Suboxone, and once they're stabilized and they have treatment supports and they're able to transfer to some of the primary care capacity out in the clinics, we'll be doing that. So kind of like the hub-and-spoke model, which is something that's been replicated, that we can replicate that's being done in other communities. So I would not say our word is contingent upon the jail MAT project, but it would certainly strengthen and reinforce what's happening in the jail if we were able to continue that project in the jail. And I absolutely think it's been successful so far.
Do we have any numbers?
In terms of numbers served, or how much money we'll receive?
No, not in terms, I'm talking about in terms of, you know, we administer this in the jail, do we have any stats that show whether or not this is continued once they're released?
That's a great question, and I don't have access to that information, but I'm sure the sheriff does.
Okay.
Yeah, they should be tracking it for the grant. I don't have those numbers either. So exciting and good for the community, and will fit with all the other things that we're working on. Again, whole opioid harm reduction strategy in place, and there's a bunch of parts of that, one of which is this intensive treatment.
Silas, may I ask a question too? So how, since you have the, now we'll have the ability to provide that outpatient services, is there any way that the, the HHS can provide that services in the jail?
We could provide it if we were asked to be the contracted provider.
Okay.
So right now, the sheriff has a contract with a third, another vendor essentially to do that treatment service.
Okay.
CRC Allied Health Clinic. And the county has rules for how they typically, we all do this standard routine business for awarding vendor contracts for that type of activity.
Okay.
With the exception that if the county wanted another part of the county government, or actually other governments, you know, there's provisions for if you're doing intergovernmental agreements versus the nonprofit or for-profit. Interestingly, it is a for-profit corporation.
That was my understanding.
That is doing the work today.
Along that continuum of care, what's your, you guys feeling that if we had an opportunity, and we got the grant to take that over in the, in the jail, MAT program in the jail, how do you see, would that be an advantage for the continuum of care that once they get out? Or does it really make any difference whether you have a private provider provide it in the jail and then, and then we provide it outside?
I think it makes a difference in a couple of different ways. One of the things that we do as part of our community-based mental health and addiction services is specialize in working closely with the justice system. So we, we serve a lot of justice system-involved individuals, whether they're been adjudicated and they're coming out, they're re-supervised in the community, whether that's juvenile justice or adults, we're part of the ongoing treatment and wraparound supports for those individuals. And then we do a lot of justice system diversion and are contracted with the state for a couple of specialized services that we do. So when possible, to have continuity of care pre, during incarceration and post-incarceration by a single provider that has ties to the community and can refer out to specialty care, that is the gold star and would be my recommendation if we were able to put that.
Because that's what sounds like, makes sense, makes sense to me too, so.
I'm thinking of folks that we met as part of my orientation this week who really probably would have benefited by just that, still already being involved with that county program.
The only thing I'll say is, you know, it matters how we resource those programs, and it's better to have a project or a program that's funded and adequately resourced by a healthcare provider in place, period. I mean, that's sort of the first important ingredient. And then from there, you can look at really what, who's providing the care, and is it the most tied into this other system of services and supports locally? And that's more like an advanced practice model where you can really get into good care coordination and care management and adequately getting the information before and during and after that episode of care. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure it's properly resourced. We won't be able to provide the service cheaper than, you know, the agencies that are doing the work, for example.
With a grant running out, the MAT grant in the jail running out in April, have, have you and the sheriff had any conversations about other potential, I mean, you talked about other potential grant, the sheriff looking at other potential grant funds? Have you guys actually collaborated on what funds may exist to allow that to happen?
I'm aware of the main grant that he has and that there's a request to either continue or perhaps it's a variation of the one-year grant to continue it. And beyond that, I don't have a lot of information specifically how that service could be provided in the jail under a grant award.
Okay, thanks, Silas.
And just a reminder, and I think everybody understands this, a lot of the funds that we have at HHS are either determined by the payer, it's a, it's a dedicated grant stream for a population or a service, or largely three-quarters of our funding is Medicaid-related. So if it's Medicaid or the Oregon Health Plan, those funds are not allowable in an incarceration cycle. And they do, so far, the federal government and states have interpreted that to be both pre-trial and post-adjudication. So there's a portion of the population who are pre-trial, which means essentially innocent until proven guilty, but they do lose their Medicaid benefit, this is a big policy issue. And therefore, the Board of Commissioners and the County General Fund kicks in to provide the healthcare service, or in this case, there is a special grant for the sheriff to administer this program. And both pre and post-adjudication, they're not eligible for Medicaid. And that's where we have a difficult time, either with specialized grant funds or Medicaid funds to provide that service.
Right, because you can't go in there with the funds you currently have.
Correct, unless we have special funds identified and/or County General Fund, which is how we've been supported over the years to do what we have been able to do for behavioral health supports.
Thanks, Silas.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that more.
Yeah, well, thanks for all the questions. Those are important policy issues, I think, especially the Medicaid eligibility for people in pre-trial, because that's something that National Association of Counties, the National Association of Sheriffs, the National Association of County Behavioral Health and Developmental Disability Directors, crazy name.
What was that again?
Yeah!
We're going to call it NACTV.
I was going to ask you if you could pronounce it.
Who did that? I don't know.
Love it.
We live with it. All those national associations are working on that policy issue, and there's interest locally in more creative thinking around it.
Yeah. Okay. And the state, one last question about that. So you've explained that at times, state general funds go into indigent care, I think is the catch-all. Could those funds be used for treatment in a jail setting? Or are they also excluded? Or is it just because it's for a certain population?
So historically, those funds, and they're very, very limited.
That's what I thought.
Have been used for crisis services in the community mental health. What's, what is under 430.630, that statute that basically says a community mental health shall do the following?
Oh, right.
And those clauses as subject to the availability of funds.
Funds, yeah.
Which Commissioners often come back to at times and say to the state, you know, we can't do this thing on the many menu of options.
Right.
To my knowledge, jail-based health is not on that list of things under there.
Yeah.
But typically, state general fund that's for indigent is what we apply to the people who are vulnerable slipping through the cracks in the community.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, good, good.
So the remainder, we were going to talk about the community health improvement, which Lindsay's been leading this work to take our community health assessment and then, along with a bunch of community leaders, put it into these priority areas that have a handout. And then we're going to talk about suicide training, prevention work that we're doing, the trainings, just because I think that had been an interesting topic that we maybe had asked about it.
Sure.
Commissioner, and then, and homelessness, and she's been helping with some of the community work around that. So you want to start with Chip and I'll finish up?
Absolutely. So after a robust community health assessment that took place with public health and was completed in December 2017, our public health team worked with community members through a number of means, through surveys, through community forums, to develop out of that assessment what we wanted our priority areas to be over the next five years to work on. Through that process, we identified the priorities in front of you. There's trauma reduction and community resiliency, preconception health, as well as unintended pregnancy prevention, and then tobacco and vaping, and two behavioral health components. We initially started with one behavioral health component, and unsurprisingly, it's a big, big chunk of work. And so based on the committee's really desires to focus energy, we broke it into two sections, one being substance use and the other suicide prevention. So each of these priority areas has a community-based work group that happens, led by one of our team members in public health, our health prevention and promotion team. And they go through a process of identifying strategies, and then within all of those strategies, different activities and objectives and things that we can do as a community to move these different priority areas in the way that we want to be moving them. So you can see each of the, excuse me, each of the strategies under these here, and each strategy, of course, has a ton of components of work that's happening. Within each component of work, we, at Public Health, we like to track and monitor and check on outcomes, and so we also have different process measures that we're tracking, as well as overall health outcome measures. A lot of the health outcome measures that we're tracking for things like this are things that take sometimes generations to move. So I always joke that public health is a marathon, not a sprint, and some of these things, we have both these short-term goals that we hope to achieve within the next five years, as well as longer-term goals that we're really hoping that we just get the ship steered in the right direction and can keep moving things forward. So we do rely on a lot of process-level measures, sort of things like how many people have been impacted by this program, how many people have engaged in this, what's happening in the schools, policy changes, things like that, that help us assure that we are on track to hitting some of those bigger outcomes, those that take longer to track and see outcomes.
A question, Lindsay, on like the two of the behavioral health ones, you know, and being that I'm also outcome, outcome-based, you know, and believing using good evidence to become those outcomes. You talk about things like how many people, the stats, which takes over years and years to get how many people were engaged in the program, how many affected, but does that really tell us whether the program did what it was supposed to do?
It's a good question, and I think there's a couple of components to that. One is being really thoughtful about what types of interventions and things that you're putting in place and assuring that you're using things that have evidence to support the fact that over time, they will produce the outcomes that you're hoping to see.
Right.
And so we try to do that as, as much as possible, so use those evidence-based tools, outcomes, processes and those types of things that really can help provide some assurance that you're heading in the right direction. And then I think having some of those short-term goals, like things like, yeah, so I think Silas is passing on to second page here, which has some information about one of the specific ones around suicide prevention. So an example here is one of our goals within the suicide prevention was to increase what we call a public health gatekeeper trainings. So these are essentially community-based trainings for people to prevent suicide. It's sort of like the CPR of behavioral health as well. And so knowing that these are evidence-based programs that support decreasing suicide rates over time, if you can implement them and get a large array of community members trained, one of our goals is to increase that. So we have to get staff trained for some of these, so we have some community members that are trained, and so we're collecting data on how many of these trainings are being offered and how many people are involved in them. many of these trainings are being offered and how many people are involved in them. And it's been pretty significant over the last few months, something the community seems to have a big appetite for. Our trainings are filling up every single time we do them.
And for example, like to pull the camera back to a statewide approach, this mental health first aid, which is an evidence-based training model that we've implemented locally and also statewide, we're up to almost twenty-five thousand Oregonians statewide have been trained under that in the last three, it's a little over three years that we've implemented. So each one of these in this menu of options is something that we're offering.
So does statistics show like in the state of Oregon, statewide, low that suicide is, is decreasing?
We, unfortunately, we are following the national average and the trend has been upward in most areas that we measure, with particular focus on veterans, older adults and a young adult, a youth, young adult population, those three areas, I know, are some of where we're most troubled. Nationally, there are higher rates within rural communities and interestingly, also more northern hemisphere communities. So we are not unlike those trends and we are doing a lot of things locally to try to avoid any further harm in the community. And not only are we doing the prevention, but we're also doing a bunch of evidence-based treatment and post prevention, when there have been unfortunate, you know, deaths, either traumatic deaths and, and loss of life through overdose or other things besides death by suicide, we're really thinking differently and behaving differently and having a system response in terms of how we outreach to the community. Certainly schools and places like that, we've always known we need to do that work, but we're doing that more thoughtfully with a whole spectrum of age, so up into older adults, where we outreach to community when we've had any kind of traumatic loss of life.
Maybe where you, I mean, maybe a follow-up to that is, were you asking, does this approach work? And it didn't sound like it, it, it showing it in Oregon, but I wondered if there's, I assume that there's something.
That's basically what I get at, cause you know, but it takes several years, several, several years to see if it works. It's not something that'll work in a year or two, but basically that was basically my question, I think Silas explained it very well, is over a period of time, in, we can't, you know, we can't judge us against like, on the national stats against New York or Los Angeles, but in the rural communities, cause there is a whole different problem in the rural communities and the rural counties, do the statistics, are there any statistics that show that we've had an impact on that rate in the rural areas?
I think those are things that we're gonna be tracking over the next five years, being that we just got our completion of these priority areas, that the strategies, really it's been since January that we've really launched most of the work that's happening under this, so I hope.
The new work, we've been doing suicide prevention and some of those strategies for a while. And I think part of it is, we need to have an honest understanding of that we don't change the way that people live in our communities and experience safe, nurturing, loving home lives, or our school communities or broader community through a single strategy or a governmental intervention, or teaching a class, or having a, a great youth church leader understand how to respond in the right way at the right time.
Right.
We wanna give all those skills and tools to the community as best we can and to really deal with some of the social conditions and the negative things like people who are harming themselves or dying by suicide, we need community involved. And that's what's really been exciting about the work that's happening around the, the community that is involved in these work groups and taking ownership, and particularly some of the school communities that are adopting like the sources of strength, which is a school intervention that can happen within the four walls of the school, but it really relies on the peer-to-peer connections. And really trying to shift into a more safe, nurturing school environment and teach and model those skills between all layers of administration, teachers to, to students and, and really create that together. Cause some of these children are coming from really difficult, high-risk families where they're not gonna get that level of support and the school is the main anchor point for them.
I appreciated with learning about the sources of strength, how, how much peer training there is a focus in there, like students being aware of them.
So moving on to the last topic, homelessness. So we've been working, along with a lot of different parts of the community, on strategies and talk about an enormous issue that we're facing and need from, you know, affordable housing all the way to workforce housing, to just making sure that people who are coming here for middle income and white-collar type jobs can find a place to live, to people who are at risk of homelessness or who are already experiencing homelessness, and how do we, you know, support them back into community and being able to get back on their feet and also prevent people who are maybe on the edge. So it's a huge issue. Lindsay's been helping lead McMinnville's efforts, but we've just recently been working a little more on what parts of the county are doing what and trying to put that together. So we started a draft document, Lindsay put this together, and we collaborated on, that I'll pass around, and it's just a way to try on one page to show some of what we think is happening. So the caveat is, this has not seen the light of day to a bunch of other people that will wanna add to it.
Right. It was just what you knew about.
It's not everything, right?
And what people told you.
It's what could get onto one page and maybe help us have a conversation about what role we might take in the process. So at the conclusion of hearing a little bit about this, I would like to get some input from you three about what role you see us in going forward as the county's health and services. So if you wanna share more about the, what you've been doing, especially McMinnville?
Yeah, the component that I'm most familiar with is the, really, it's a committee off of the Affordable Housing Task Force of the City of McMinnville. And the, the focus of the committee is really on housing for the homeless. So it's really looking at individuals who are already experiencing homelessness and how we can support getting them into shelter. We have taken the, this whole body of work and really broken it into, to sort of what I would call bite-sized chunks, either by population, knowing that certain populations need things that are different than other populations, as well as some projects that seem to have a bit of traction like tiny homes or things like that. So you can see that the, those groups are listed and each of those work groups develop different plans and things that they like to tackle as far as accommodating shelter, providing shelter for, for those groups. You've been part of those discussions, Commissioner.
Oh, I just wanted to add something to, Commissioner Carlson, Janet Carlson, who's no longer a commissioner and she's gonna be moving to Idaho, but she, and I don't know, Ken, I think you were part of a presentation that she gave on the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative, where it's gonna be sort of a federal continuum of care applied to homelessness and is going to be coming and doing a presentation in April for the board to see whether or not we are interested in getting, becoming involved in a, in a bigger, more of a rural continuum of care discussion for homelessness. So I think that's gonna be something that would be another, another one of the things that we could consider that we would, could possibly use.
Correct, and that was late breaking, cause right now Marion County and Polk County have already had some discussions. And so then, you know, the last Friday during an administrator's meeting, there was a, you know, an offer, an interest to see if we were interested into joining Polk and Marion County and basically having a three-county area on this.
Makes sense.
So.
Well, I'd like to learn more about that.
We'll know more in April.
Don't expect a presentation from me today, cause.
Actually, if you wanted to come to the presentation on April twenty-third, Janet Carlson will be there and she's been working on this for a while.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think part of it is, we're trying to navigate and bring staff resource as appropriate to meet the community need where we're able, right? And there's so much of this work that needs to be done at the municipal level and is happening. And yet, there's been a number of people that have asked either directly, I know, to commissioners or to me or to Lindsay about what role will the county take or can you help with this? And so of course, we wanna help where we can and we wanna be thoughtful about how we do that. So this group, the Housing Solutions Group that Commissioner Pula has pulled together a couple of times, is another group that's trying to make sense of across the county who's doing what. The Housing Authority had an event in, and I wanna say end of January, early February, I'm not sure if they have more planned. Obviously, they are a critical partner in all of this. And then there's what the municipal governments have kind of done in each of the different areas, and then there's lots that isn't here. We didn't put some of the supported housing that's more targeted to a certain population on this list, because if this is going more broadly, that's, that sometimes warrants it then a second conversation about how and what and what that, what that model looks like.
Yeah.
But we could, this is sort of a working document that'll get some input. But sort of where we're at is wondering, is there a space to have some sort of overarching framework, whether it's this type of a regional collaboration or more county-driven? If so, what would that look like?
What would it look like?
And who and how would we staff it if the county took a leadership role? I know some of the city folks have said, well, we would provide this or we can, in fact, what the city's done from a staffing standpoint and how they have it organized on their, their website and things is really, they've done a really nice job with that. In some ways, they're probably, and I mean the city of McMinnville, they're further along in this process.
Yeah.
But there is some learning that might happen organically and then there's some learning that perhaps could be accelerated if we took a leadership role. But we, Lindsay and I, are not exactly clear on the board's policy position and you may not be exactly clear on it either. That's fine.
Right.
But we just wanted to bring it here and also just continue a conversation and offer our service or, you know, ideas if there are gonna be more discussions around what that should look like going forward.
Silas, you, yeah, did you have a?
Go ahead, no.
Okay. All right, so maybe Lindsay knows this, but I'll address it to both of you. City councilors in McMinnville have commented regularly, and I think you probably even heard some of this comment yesterday, that, how would they say it, that the county has the ability to access ninety percent of the funds to help with homelessness and the cities can only access ten percent of them. And I was wondering if you have any thoughts on where funding can come from for staffing, for projects and programs?
I think what they were referencing yesterday and what I know, there are certain community development grants that you have to be a certain size to be able to access. And right now, where McMinnville and quite frankly, City of Newburgh fall, is right in between. So we're not small enough to be able to dive into something over here or be eligible and we're not large enough over here, and so we're falling into this weird space of not being able to access those. And so whether or not those specific funding sources that they referenced yesterday are things that we could have accessed as a county, I'm not sure. But certainly it would, the possibility of having larger numbers may increase the ability to look for certain funding sources.
Right.
So I might add that sometimes I think the community will correctly attribute the behavioral health resource or supports and services that are in place to the county's, either our delivery system or the contracts that we have placed with subcontractors who are working to support community need. And that is accurate around how the funding, funding flows in the Medicaid funds that we administer. But none of that is really a housing-related activity and we as HHS are not tasked with through, you know, funds or through regulatory function, housing specifically. Really, it's the Housing Authority locally that's administering most of those public support funds and we have some, you know, ways that we've been good partners and creative together on those projects. But the bulk of it comes through there or through the Community Action Agency, YCAP. And so it's not to say that we shouldn't be part of design work around that, but I do think it's important to note that we really don't have a line of business or any kind of direct funding that is for homelessness prevention.
Yeah.
There's an interest like this regional collaborative, if there was a consultant to, could come in and teach us about what the county government is able to do or access differently than the municipal governments, or how we could work in partnership to be more effective or leverage funds, those are the kinds of things that we don't have the technical resource internal, we just don't have a content expertise.
Right.
In our office to do that. And that could really help us, whether we, you know, went out and tried to contract for that or whether we got a mini-grant or whether that was part of this regional collaborative, I don't know. And certainly, there may be outside funding or grant opportunities that all of us could write for, but they're just, in my mind, I don't have the, you know, multimillion-dollar community investment opportunity that we just haven't.
Right, they're here just having, yeah, exactly.
Or that we're, we're just here, we just wanna hand this over and say, can we apply for this?
Yeah.
We don't have that at our fingertips either.
I think it's really important to, I, I know when I would go to the housing, Housing for Homelessness Committee meetings and people would make suggestions that the county perhaps wasn't carrying its own weight, I think a list, a comprehensive list of all the services that could be considered and are really sort of the, the preemptive strike against homelessness. We see it with a lot of, a lot of our programs in Health and Human Services, we see it with YCAP and we see it with the Housing Authority. So to say that there are not programs that target each specific demographic or each particular challenged population is not to really look at just how much is being done by the county.
Yeah, I guess a couple of things, go back to your original statements, Silas. You know, and I agree with what Mary said, I think the Yamhill County probably does a better job than most of the counties in the state of, state of Oregon and probably most of the counties around the nation, I think. But when we talk about everything we do and what the City of McMinnville's doing, what the City of Newburgh's doing, everybody's doing, what appears to be missing to me is an actually leadership umbrella. Because like I have people in Newburgh telling me like, well, you know, if McMinnville through ordinance or whatever addresses a lot of the homeless issues, they're gonna push them to Newburgh. Then it's Newburgh's problem, what's Newburgh gonna do? You know, which is a fair, I mean, that's a fair, that's a fair observation. So I think we should continue what we're doing, but I'm also a firm believer that the county is in a situation or in a position that we have issues, issues with homeless and affordable, you know, low-income housing in, in West Valley and Newburgh and Amity and Dayton, all over. And, and the smaller cities, they don't have, like McMinnville and Newburgh, they don't have the, the resources to dedicate to those sort of things. They don't even have the resources to build up partnerships with local churches, local civic clubs. And so I think what's missing to me and what, if it was my, my say, what I do, is I think somebody needs to actually take the lead of tying everything together. And I really think that should be the county, I mean, that's just me, but I think that should be the county's responsibility. Counties, what we should do is we should be taking, leading the charge, so.
Do you have any thoughts? I was gonna ask a clarifying question, but, do you have any? What would that look like?
I don't know.
Great, I don't know either, but I, I started in my head going through all the things that like are on my calendar every week, calling this person and kinda cajoling that person and, you know, some of them and, and I thought, wait a minute here, that it could be, it could be really great to have somebody who's not me. And, you know, like I don't, I don't even know what these two are doing because we don't talk as much as maybe it would be best that we do. But I know that I'm probably spending twenty hours a week on it, doing the things that I could see a staff member of the county perhaps doing.
Well, I can tell, I can tell you Casey, yesterday at our AEDEC, our Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, which is a segment we've had through SEDCor, we had all, almost every city except Dayton wasn't there, Yamhill was there, Carlton was there, and most of the time of the whole thing about attracting jobs, it wasn't about grow, it wasn't about job growth, it was about job vitality. And what everybody was saying is that we just, we're facing like, what's affordable housing? You know, whether you call it workforce housing, low-income housing, affordable housing. And in economic development, we're facing the same thing. So here, we have a group that's out here working with all the cities on economic development. We have a group that's, like, like Mary says, she's working on the, one of the homeless, you know, committees and you're working on it, but nobody seems to be tying everything together. And what that would look like, I don't know what that would look like, but it seems like, I think the county could play a bigger, bigger role in trying to tie those ends together.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure what it would be, but.
Interestingly, so I, I was, I got to go in your place to Representative Bonamici's listening session on housing. And Brett Baker was the last one, he's the head, CEO of Austin Industries. Everybody went around and then he just happened to be the last one. And he said, I don't know anything about this, I just know, and this was the quote, is that housing is a headwind for Austin Industries. So that the, they're, the housing challenges are what's keeping them from moving forward in the world.
Well, a couple of people at our meeting, at our meeting Monday over at Newburgh on the economic development meeting, a couple of people from MIP said the same, from the Minnesota Springs said the same thing, says, we have property developed, we have a lot of good business interests. of good business interests, and we don't have any place for them to live.
Right.
And that's what, and it goes, gets down to zoning laws, it gets down to SDCs, it gets down to permit costs, but they said, we have the property shovel ready, but we can't get anybody to come here because we don't have anybody, any place for them to live, so.
Well, and that, I think, speaks to, and it's something I've said before, is that unless and until the state of Oregon is, is willing to at least look, even maybe perhaps in the rural areas, how to compromise on the restrictive land use laws, uh, I don't see how we're going to, if, if the inventory doesn't exist because the land use laws are restrictive, we're not going to magically wave a wand and come up with a brilliant idea that's going to produce that, make more dirt, make more available dirt for housing. The SDC issue is enormous, and when you push back on it, like I did in Newburgh, and I did with, uh, Shalen Parks and Recreation, it's like, well, no, we need our money, we need to, but then it adds $7,000 to a developer building a house, and they're not going to build affordable houses because they can't afford to, because they're not going to break even. So I think until we start looking at some of these things, we're really going to be spinning on wheels. But what's amazing is, I think there's an awful lot of different projects that are in the works, and as you said, Casey, I think it's important for us to get an idea of just what all these encompass. But I also think it, it's, it would behoove us not to say, well, let staff take care of it, because if you're spending 20 hours a week, and, and I'm spending whatever number hours a week on, on my particular projects with, with housing, I think that makes sense. We are commissioners and we are getting paid. So to say somebody else is going to do it, it seems that's the answer. Let somebody else on staff do it. Our staff is treading water. They can barely keep up with what they're doing. So unless you want to hire somebody to do this, I think either we do it, or, uh, we at least get an idea of what it is we want to do.
Well, that's, I, I agree with you, Mary, that's it. We have to have a good idea of what we want to do before we decide who does it. I probably don't spend as much as you, of course, I probably spend 10 to 12 hours a week on one, issues with housing or homeless. I go down fairly often down across from City Hall, and I'll sit down and talk to, I'll talk to some of those people. I go out on Marsh Lane, and sometime I'll just talk to those people, but, but, so I agree with you 100%, we have to decide what we want to do, because there's a lot of different good ideas, and there's a lot of good, but at the state, it's like the 20-year buildable lands inventory that cities need to maintain. The city has light industrial property that they can't, I mean, they'd be excellent for multiple family housing, but then they have to find 20 more acres to replace it with someplace else.
Right.
And we don't need light industrial property anymore. So, you know, until the state, I agree, until the state addresses both in rural areas and in cities, the whole way the lands inventory is done, we're not going to get any place.
There are a couple of rural counties that have been granted, um, sort of the exemption to go ahead and to use their land differently because they're in a different position. I mean, Loma County is not Harney County. So the acknowledgement is now there, I think, I think they're realizing it, but that's not helping us any.
No, and I, I really appreciate this discussion, because I think, you know, we all, we all agree on, we need, we need more of it, we need to do something more. I think the thing about it is, is how does, how does it get done? And that's the issue, so I, I'd like to take a bigger lead, but I don't know what that lead would be.
Yeah.
Do you have any suggestions? You think about this more than me, and you have a long history of it.
Yeah. One, I need to apologize for Lindsay, she had another appointment that she knew she couldn't miss, and I knew she couldn't miss, and we were watching the clock. And she said, should I just walk out?
She's gone.
Yep, quietly leave. So just want you to know that she was excused.
That's what you want to give.
It wasn't something you said, uh, she would have liked to be here for the whole conversation.
And I guess, you know, before, because I know you were asking, and I'm guessing also because I know we're having a pretty lengthy discussion on this topic, but also recognizing, you know, because Silas was doing an update, and I know we have some other updates and another agenda. But I'm also in recognizing, and I'm not, you know, that this might warrant or, or be an independent work session to where, you know, I think there's some other folks, you know, I'm, Ken Friday's in the room, you know, with the, you know, with planning, with HHS, with, uh, community corrections, you know, I think there's some other department heads, and I think it would be really good to have also participating in this kind of discussion, where we're going with this. And just, I'm also looking at the time for the agenda, and it seems like this would be a, a topic that we may want to, you know, schedule for a future work session.
I feel like it might even be on my calendar.
I sure appreciate you putting together all this information.
Thank you.
And we do have.
This is the kind of stories we have to tell.
Janet Carlson, the former commissioner for Marion County, is coming on April 23rd to make the presentation. And I can also share the materials that I did receive, um, at that presentation ahead of time, so you can get a look at that as well.
And Clackamas County is also, um, has a very collaborative approach, um, to their, to ending homelessness in their community too. And they have offered to.
Come.
I do want to go on record, because I didn't get a chance to answer, that I do think I could help, or with Lindsay and myself, scope out what a next project could look like if you wanted to take a county lead in the effort, and I didn't know Ken was here, but I was going to mention that we probably should isolate sort of the land use and policy issues, separate from the social service and programming.
Well, I think, I think the thing would be.
But I could at least take a stab at, like, here's a way to consider it. Now, we can do that on the 23rd after you hear from Janet Carlson. I didn't want to leave this conversation without an offer to at least take that next step, if you all want at some point.
Yeah, I think after we have a work, after Janet's here and we have a work session with everybody, I think that'd be an ideal time to do that.
Right.
Thank you for answering.
So thanks, Silas.
Short answer.
Great, great report.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Was that the, for your update?
That was it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The end. I knew that last topic we were going to.
You always give a good update.
Save it for the end.
Thank you, Silas.
Except for Lindsay, at least.
And you did a good job of handing out the paperwork too, Silas.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that'll take us through our first department reporter. Second, second one, we have Shane from Hopon here from IT, so Shane, come on forward.
Should we bring another chair up?
Need another chair? These guys here just observed.
That's a great idea.
Okay, bring another chair up.
They're here.
Why do I have to use that? I don't have to.
No, you can talk, you can do whatever you want.
I'll just talk to you. Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm pleased to present the IT quarterly update. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce a couple of other members of the information technology leadership team. This is John Burns, our systems administrator, and Christopher Garcia, our network administrator.
Chris.
Christopher's been with us about five months now. He worked about six years for Autolane Northwest. Comes to us with a very strong technical background, and we're excited to have one of his.
Welcome.
And I see emails from John.
And John, we get, John's a great weekend email. Oh, John Burns!
It's in touch all weekend long.
That's right.
Awesome, so I'll begin, I'll just run down kind of our major projects review kind of while, ask questions for help if you want, or if you want, so. Uh, first one, improving security, it's always a big agenda item, but probably the number one priority for us, to always evaluate where we're at, always trying to get better. Uh, since Christopher's come on board, he's made some really good recommendations, we've implemented some of those recommending, recommendations, and we're definitely taking some steps forward. Uh, if you'd like more specifics on that, always happy that we could, to get together with you on a one-on-one basis and discuss those changes, if you're interested. Uh, Amity substation equipment for the sheriff's office, since they took over Amity, we've worked with them to get some new equipment out there, PCs, uh, Christopher deployed a new firewall out there for them, and did some discovery to get a good solid internet connection, and we've got them dialed in, and we're not getting any help desk tickets, so I think these are, they're running fine. Uh, Palo and Juniper training, uh, that was primarily for Christopher, just to kind of bring him up to speed on some of our specific equipment, specialized equipment that we use here. Office 365 deployment, that started, I guess, last October, November. And John, of course, has done a great job as the project manager for that project. Uh, that project is winding down, uh, we're in the final stages. Uh, John's going through tickets right now, and looking at remediation, and trying to clean those tickets up, and then we're going to circle once back through leadership to see if there's any kind of, to check with their departments, to see if there's kind of any last pain points or anything. And so I'm confident over the next few weeks, we should be able to have project closure on that one for phase one. Uh, we set up an AID's test environment, we haven't had one before, and, uh, we had to work with the vendor to get that done, that's kind of a big deal, and there's seen, there's always updates and, and, uh, new, you know, new requests, and it's always nice for a production system to have a good test environment, so you can go in there and test the changes prior to going live. Tablo, of course, our reporting tool, we did a major version upgrade for that. Autumnon conversion preparation, uh, most of you are familiar with the pre-trial justice information system that we built in-house for corrections, and, uh, they're looking to get approval to move to a third-party product called Autumnon. And, uh, we've done some preliminary work on the data conversion side, really just looking at what it would take to get the data from our legacy system to Autumnon, and most of that was to give Jessica those inputs, to give her the green light that yes, we can do it. And so we've done a little bit of work, and now we're kind of just pausing, waiting for that final approval, before we actually go off and do the rest of the work. Uh, Exella Planning Data Conversion, uh, so we're working with Ken Friday's group in planning, they're of course moving to Exella, and again, one of our big roles there is moving, uh, data, uh, from our legacy system to the state system, so we're working closely with some IT people on the other side, and, and meeting weekly with, uh, with Ken's group on, for the project.
And they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Uh, Windows 10 Update Testers Group, uh, so John created a kind of a testers group, and we have, you know, a handful of users, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe 20 people in there. Uh, and the thought there is now when we push out Windows 10 updates, they'll go to that testers group, and if something breaks, you're, you're breaking a handful of people versus the entire county. So at, at the end of the week, we give them at least a week or so, and if we don't hear anything back and everything's functioning fine, then we roll the changes out to the rest of the county. So, just kind of a better, a better way of doing it. Uh, Documentation and Cross Training, that's always going to be a gen item, and we're always striving to get better at that. I actually have four whole meetings set up right now on the programmer side. Uh, we have weekly meetings where we sit down and pick a topic, and we review the documentation, we'll create it, and, uh, we're making sure we get that knowledge transfer, so that we can fill any gaps and, and, and have that cross coverage. Uh, Complete 2018-19 Major Projects, so, uh, we still have a few outstanding projects from, uh, that we're identifying in our 1819 budget, and, um, most, I think the two big ones are the Link Balancer Replacement and the Telco Data Switch Refresh, and we're still on track to complete those by June 30th. Uh, I think the other thing we're looking at too is to some, uh, do an evaluation on our licensing compliance, there's just a few things that we're gonna, we want to finish up on that, and so those will be the big ones, uh, from here till the end of June. Uh, there is one other project that got thrown in the mix, and that's a Connect Upgrade. Uh, Connect is the next version upgrade for ShoreTel System. And, uh, so we're going to be putting some time into that, um, since Mitel acquired ShoreTel, we're kind of forcing our hand that we have to do this upgrade, and it's one of those things that, uh, we're starting to meet weekly with the vendor now, and really prepare a solid project plan, because there's a lot, there's some training involved, and it's one of those things you can't faze, you have to roll it up to 700 people, so we want to be very well organized when we do that.
And I'll just add to that, because another part of the, the discussion with our ShoreTel is, as you know, the, we provide the city of McMinville, uh, phone services. Half of the city is currently on ShoreTel, um, with the rest of the county. Um, the other half of the city's still on an older legacy, you know, and they've been having issues with their voicemail and their voicemail system, and, and so we were approached by the city about at what point, you know, to, to upgrade the rest of the city. They currently pay in, they pay the county for the telephone services. And I'm not saying that we're going to have the discussion right now, but I just wanted to, to, you know, basically, you know, um, just put it on your radar that we are going to need to schedule a time to come back, where Shane, Justin, and I, to come back and have a conversation about the city's, uh, conversion, um, because of course, some of that is also driving our need to update the communicator for our current ShoreTel. Um, you know, it's not just that, but in order for the rest of the city to come on, we have to finish doing this upgrade, because with Mitel buying out ShoreTel and some changes with the communicator, so.
A big part of it too is they're forcing our hand where to buy, you have to buy the, the new line of switches, and to get the new line of switches, you have to be on this upgrade, so that's one of the good drivers.
So tell us how, tell me how you really feel about Mitel doing more ShoreTel.
I'm good. I'm good.
So we'll have more information, and it's actually going to be in the coming weeks, you know, it's.
Just yesterday, the city folks were telling me about IT and the sharing of that component, so I figured something must be coming up.
You know, and part of that's going to be a larger discussion too, you know, about moving forward and a, a larger discussion about some of these partnerships or shared resources and how we set this up, so.
Uh, so we built some views for budgetary expense reporting, this was really cool, uh, because Mike Barnhart approached me and said he was, he, he has some repetitive tasks, trying to get some information out of JIM, so it was just really time consuming. So I had Todd and Jill, uh, kind of review the process with him, and they were able to really streamline how he gets the information out, and they were able to take this process where it was really laborious to go all the steps he had to go through, and so it was a really, it's one of those cool things that IT can really do, can, you know, working in partnerships with anybody that wants to go through some process improvement, looking for leading out the process, removing waste, and then looking for automation, but in this case, it was, uh, I don't know how many hours that we used this time by, but it was quite significant, so, you know, it's actually pretty cool to, to see the difference, so that was a lot of fun. Proval 9 dot 1 dot 3 upgrade for, uh, for the tax assessment for Derek's group, so we did that. And, uh, we did some more process improvements for Derek's group as well. Um, one, for example, was they have a 90 file that goes to Master's Touch, so we just did some optimizations with that, and a couple other things for him. And from December 19th to March 16th, we closed out 2,704 help desk tickets.
Yeah.
So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of tickets.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and that's what I have for you, so, any questions?
I, I do want to say, Shane, that, uh, talking to Tom O'Connor, and, and at our last, especially our last two EBDMI meetings, that Tom has been so complimentary, and Jessica too, about the work that you guys have done in with the EDMI project team and with Criminal Justice, to do the move to Autumnon, and looking at Autumnon, and how we convert the pre-trial system, and now maybe a youth pre-trial system, so they've been very, they've been very complimentary. And the thinking you bring to the, I mean, not just in an IT area, but as far as how you manage projects, how you move projects forward, has been very good for the, been very good for the committee, so.
I appreciate that, yeah, it's, that's a, that's a really great group, a lot of diverse experiences, and it's a fun group to work with, because they all, you know, we all come with different strengths, so it's, you know, it's a, it's a good experience, so I appreciate that, thank you. Amen.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
The unsung heroes, thank you.
The guys behind the scenes.
You guys do a lot.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys, have a nice afternoon.
You too.
Okay, Commissioners, that takes us to the, um, Consent Agenda Review for our, and the Non Consent Agenda Review at or leaving for Thursday's meeting, so attached to your pack, it was the, um, the agenda, the agenda for, draft agenda for Thursday. Uh, right now, we have several items under, uh, Old Business and Other Business, we have the consideration of findings rescinding support of the mass gathering permit for the Newburgh, Rogers Memorial. Consideration of the findings of written decision, yes, support to mass gathering, that'll be the, we'll have that all for us Thursday, Christian.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we also have the consideration of the findings for the mass gathering permit for Wildwood Music Festival, that will be in front of us. Again, that takes us down to Other Business, a consideration of the following changes to the Amhill Safety Advisory Committee, I take, we want to leave that on the, move that to the Consent Agenda. Item D1. Item D2, consideration of authorizing Silas Sol, Halloran, Steiner, and other designated individuals to place director holds on persons deemed dangerous, to self or others, or mentally ill persons placed on conditional release, outpatient committal or trial release, and And that would be rescinding our board order, Board Order 1865. So we have any discussion, or want to put that on consent?
Yes. And just clarification maybe for you, Casey. In rescinding the board orders because of different names?
Yeah.
We have different names.
Yeah.
And I was always concerned, you know, in terms of the civil liberties of people and giving someone the authority to civilly commit them. I think that's a huge responsibility that government takes on, but we've limited it to the number of people who can do that. And I appreciate that.
Okay. So I don't know if I'm putting that to the consent agenda.
Silas and I talked a little bit about it the other day at orientation too. Because I wanted to have a little bit more background into it.
Yeah, as long as what I read, we're limited to the number of people, the kind of number of people.
It's a lot of people. I mean.
Yeah, I saw the list.
But I think it's a good thing, so.
Yeah. And now I've met some of them, so I feel more comfortable too.
So we want to put down the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Move item D2 to the consent agenda, please. Number three, consideration agreement between Amhill County Clerk's Office and Hart Inter Civic for the purchase license and maintenance cost for 10 years of the verifat verity vote tally system in the amount of $22,681 per year for a total 10-year price of $226,810.
And you may recall that there was a work session on this, Brian Embering came and did a presentation. The one thing he did mention to me, and it's just something that I'll just, just a heads up on, because the last, there was a federal election that was done with the prior system. He has to, he's worked, he needs to work out with clear ballot because he has to maintain some software licensing and some system to be able to access that data in case the, there, it's audited from the previous one. And he's working out the details on that right now.
And how long does we have to maintain, would we have to maintain?
He's working on the details. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's just basically, he's looking at doing a scaled back version that he can still maintain in case there's an audit, that they can look at it, but it's not the full vote tally system. And he made it seem like it would only be for the next year. And then he would do a 100% full, you know, he's already looking at moving to Hart, moving back to Hart. But he has to maintain some licensing and part of the system for the clear ballot here on site.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that.
Any questions, Casey, Mary?
No, thank you.
Okay, so let's move D3 then to the consent agenda. Turning over, we have item number four, consideration of reinstating limited maintenance status of High Heaven Road. And this will rescind Board Order 01809. You want to talk about that a little bit, Christian? Because I know we were going to wait for the maintenance, but we decided to do it as a separate issue.
So I guess it will depend on whether or not this ends up on the consent agenda or not. If it doesn't end up on the consent agenda, we could talk about it on Thursday. But I think I forwarded the draft board order to Carolina, so it should be.
I have it here.
In the system.
I have a paper copy of it right there. Do you want to?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah, there will be, did we do that last week already? Where we adopted the revised permit conditions?
It was, we already signed it all, so no.
Okay. So that's, that was the first.
That's right.
Piece. This is the second piece, reinstating, re-designating High Heaven Road to limited maintenance by the county. And that's, we had talked about that, if you recall, we had Bill Gillie come and discuss the results of his trip up there. He's finalizing a road official's report that will also be part of the, of the board order. But this action by the board would officially redesignate that portion of High Heaven Road as, it would be a public road, but it would be limited maintenance by the county, which is what it had been prior to 2001.
Can that rescind 01809?
Correct, which was the board order that took it out of that status.
That's right. And the board ordered, as I said, the one we already signed was the one.
Well, we changed the conditions on the permit to require the gates to be locked open effective April 1st.
Right, and that one's already been approved. We've approved that.
That was adopted on February 21st. We just completed the paperwork and had the Commissioners sign that.
I'll say, okay Commissioners, what's your other, would we like to leave that under other business for future discussion Thursday?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll leave that one under other, other business.
Okay. And then just to clarify, did you want to add the two items under old business to the consent agenda as well? The mass gathering permits?
Yes, I thought, yeah, the two items, items C1 and C2 should also be on the consent agenda. Okay, so are we, we don't have, oh, we do have, we'll get back to today's agenda.
We do have an executive session.
We do have an executive session, so I guess what we'll do before we go into executive sessions, right, and we'll have everybody leave the room.
Yeah, do you want to go right in? Do you want to take a short break? If folks need a break?
I'm ready to go.
We're ready to go right in, so.
So as soon as Carolina's ready.
Okay. Do we want to shut off first?
I'll read the statement.
Read the statement.
So the Amhill County Board of Commissioners will now meet an executive session for the purposes of conducting deliberations with persons designated by the body to negotiate real property transactions. Organ law allows the board to meet an executive, executive session for this purpose pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session and all other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced and no final decisions may be made in executive session. And at the end of the executive session, we'll reopen, return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Okay, I will rescind executive session for those that need to run. Dave, you can disconnect your, disconnect your camera, please.
Did you see if there's anyone else there who wants to come back?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there's.
Okay, we're now out of executive sessions.
So Caroline is ready.
We're now out of executive session, so I will reopen the informal work session of the Yamal County Board of Commissioners. And next thing on our list is Commissioner Updates, Announcements and Decisions or Discussion. The first thing is Budget Committee Discussion.
Commissioner Chair Christian, did you want to post executive session?
Oh, yeah, you better close.
No final decisions were made, and a direction was conveyed from the board to staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, it's to me.
Yeah. This is your turn.
Let me interrupt and then throw it right back. All right, so I sent an email, and you saw that, that Chris McLaren, after nine years of serving on the Budget Committee, has resigned his position. He will definitely be missed, you know, on the Budget Committee for the nine years, and also, you know, his community involvement and his experience, you know, with the budget. It's going to be missed. You know, but Chris being Chris, he did provide a recommendation, because knowing that we'd want to move pretty quickly on finding someone to serve on the Budget Committee, especially in light of, you know, with our service team presentations come up. However, we usually don't have Budget Committee members participating, but sometimes they will sit in and observe some of that, just to get a, you know, a new committee member, just to get a flavor of, you know, what the budget process is going to look like. So he reached out, and he had a recommendation that he wanted to bring forward, and so I'm just here to talk about next step in the process and see how the board wants to proceed.
Okay. Mary?
I have worked with Chris for, I don't know how many years we've done budgets together, but I've always been impressed, not only with his sort of institutional knowledge, but how he really was very detailed, very impartial, very calm, very knowledgeable. And I'm really sad that he's not going to be with us anymore. He was a great asset. And so if he recommends somebody, I appreciate that he's done that. And I thought the application was very impressive, and it'd be nice to have a woman, a woman from Newburgh, and somebody who that he thinks can fill his shoes.
Okay, thanks. Casey?
I noted that, or I observed that he said that he had other people too, and I just wanted to follow up that I'd like this, I really value transparent processes where people in the community get the opportunity to put their name in the hat for all of our advisory committees. And so I'd like to wait until we can put it out, open, put it on the website. That's just me.
I think, you know, this is one I'm torn on, because I believe in Casey too, that we need to allow more people to, you know, to participate and put it out. But where we are at in this budget process, and being able to bring somebody out, by the time we advertise this position and we got it, we got it out, we could be right up to the budget meetings without having anybody that has any knowledge in the budget. So I agree with you, Casey, that I'm all for putting all committee nominations there in far enough advance where people can apply them, because that's what we did in the city. But this one, my biggest concern would be we couldn't find somebody by the time we went through everything to make a real difference until April or May, at least till our Budget Committee met. So in this case, I'd take, and I've known Chris, I knew him at Oregon Mutual and everything, I'd have to take his recommendations for this one. But I do think we need to do a better job of advertising all of our far enough in advance. It would have been a nice to have a longer notification from Chris, but I know Chris struggled with this. He really didn't want to give it up either, so. And being that it is a business person, owns her own business, and she is from the east side of the county, I think, you know, that's probably a pretty good, pretty good indicator.
We've got McMinnville-centric on our Budget Committee.
So I'd like to see somebody from outside. But I do agree with you, Casey. I think in this case, though, I'd just have to probably...
I mean, I think that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'd just probably have to take Chris's recommendation on this one, so we can get somebody onboard.
He did offer to provide us with other names too. I'm just thinking that, I know that we don't move that fast, but the rest of the world can.
So...
And I value seeing a lot of different voices. I've now been involved in a number of advisory committees in the county where they had more applicants than they had positions for. And that means that we get to choose. But, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
No, I was just going to say that to Commissioner Olson's point about if we had heard from Chris a month or two months ago and said, you know, start looking. Now we're at the 11th hour. We have someone that he recommends, knowing that Chris has the knowledge of what somebody would need to fill that position. I am inclined to say, as we did with the recommendation for Denny Elmer, somebody with that business and budget background, I think we could certainly cast the net wide and spend months looking at people and interviewing. We have a good candidate with good recommendation, and as you said, is the east part of the county. So I would be in favor of us moving with this application. It is somebody who would be an asset to the Budget Committee in this case.
I would too. One thing I will say, though, on this whole general subject, is that as we have committee coming up, you know, recommendations, I think we have to do a better job as a county of those people whose terms expire but aren't turned out, you know, on a committee, of getting there, you know, three, four months in advance, getting there what they're going to do when their term comes up, and then do a list of all the different, we have all of our different committees, and when people are on them and when they expire, and then put out something more advertisements in the paper and everything, saying this committee, we have these positions, we're going to have these positions open in this committee, so we don't get caught in this, we don't get caught in this position.
Right.
So, but I'd have to agree with Commissioner staring on this one. I'd have to go with this recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was just looking at the committee, because another discussion will be with Angel once we're in the budget, because his term is coming up. And so whether or not he's going to choose, you know, ask to continue, or that discussion.
When is his?
End of June.
End of June. So... Well, Chris's was up the end of June too, wasn't it? They were both up the end.
Right. And I'm not sure what conversations were happening, and admittedly, this hadn't hit my radar yet until I got the email from Chris.
Yeah, because see, now if Angel decides, that now's the time to be contacting Angel, because if he decides the end of June, he doesn't want to serve on it anymore. We should be putting out...
We have a year.
Right now, we should, well, the end of June...
Are you appointing this person to fill out the remainder of Chris's term, or are they going to start a new term?
No, he's done.
His term is done.
He's done.
In June.
But he's resigned.
He's resigned.
Right.
I think they're saying that he's done right now.
He's done right now. It's not finishing out the rest of his term. There is no term to finish.
There isn't.
No.
Okay.
So he was done, the terms don't go through June?
They go through the end of June.
Last June.
So he's...
So he's done, but the problem is, is because the board, they can elect to continue, and he hadn't done either or. We hadn't heard that he wanted to continue, or, you know, so he basically opted out.
So he was up, he opted out, because his was up last June.
Yes.
Is there any way that we could interview this person? I mean, I think that's what you all have done for other positions. I just, I've never met them, so I read the paper, but I met the people for, I think, all the other ones, so.
But if we're going to, I think if we're going to recommend this person for the position, really, and that, her term would then come up, starting a new one in July, or no, she would, no.
No, because he's already done in June.
He's done, so she would have, but aren't they, are they two-year?
Three-year.
Three years, so she would have another two, this, the rest of this year and another two years on.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with the point, I'm fine with the point.
Okay, I am as well. Okay.
So Casey, do you want to carry that on to the, for new business, do you want to put that on the consent agenda? We'll leave it up to you. You were the...
Let's just leave it where it is, and that way I can just vote stuff.
Okay, because it's not on the, we're going to add it.
Oh, yeah, we're going to add, we're going to add that to the agenda.
We're going to add that to the agenda.
Under new business?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that'll take us to, I don't know if we want to talk about these individually, Mary, or together, but that'll take us to items B and C, which is Oregon Legislative Session, April Second Amendment Legislation, and then the Discussion of Declaring Yamal County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. So Mary, I'll turn it over to you.
So what happened was, I had wanted to bring before the board some of the legislation that was concerning some of these bills. There are 27 gun bills, 27 coming out of the legislature. And what a number of these do is make us among the most restrictive firearms regulation state in the country. And where we hadn't been, there were some concerns. I've heard from constituents, I've been concerned myself. And in the meantime, that was what I wanted to bring before the board, was to discuss in terms of do we want to weigh in and do some kind of, as we have on other bills, support, not support, that a constituent sent an email saying that, and you got it as well, wanted to join other county boards and commissioners declaring our county a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Other counties have done that, goes on to say that there was concern over the new legislation being introduced. And what my understanding of this is that a Second Amendment Sanctuary ordinance goes beyond a Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance or Resolution, and we have done those in the past.
Resolution.
Resolution. What this does is effectively make it so that the unconstitutional gun bills, should they be passed by the legislature, would not be enforced in our county, and we would not, as a Board of Commissioners, allow for funds to be expended in enforcing these laws. So what I'm asking is, do we want to, either as a board, support this Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, or, that's the question.
Casey, go ahead. I'm looking up a piece of information.
Yeah. I, based upon the conversations I've had with people in the county, I wouldn't support a Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, but I would definitely support you if you were willing to draft a letter, because I confess that I have not researched all the bills. And I'll do some of the research, but I can also rely upon you for writing a letter to the legislature on behalf of the board.
Saying?
Opposing the bills if they're infringing upon Second Amendment rights.
Okay. All right.
I mean, as a very proud gun owner, I feel comfortable with you working on it, and then I'll also do my research. I just have been focused on other things.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the way I'd like to move for right now, because as I read this information that you, that we have, Mary, that you did, there's a couple items, I think, that do concern me in there, such as, and I'm definitely a believer in the Second Amendment, you know, and I'm believing in the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Oregon, but there's a couple things from a county perspective that kind of, unless I misunderstood, and I haven't read through all the bills, like utilize, this talks about the, let me get it out here. What section is it? Under Section 3 Prohibitions, and there's a couple things, and that concern me a little bit. It says, under prohibition is that anybody in the county will not utilize, the county will not utilize any assets, county funds, or funds allocated by any entity to the county, in whole or in part, to engage in any activity that aids in the enforcement of investigation related to personal firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition. So if we have the Sheriff's Department, and they're investigating an issue with stolen firearms or personal firearms, whatever it is, this says that the county cannot pay wages or cannot pay the sheriffs for investigating this?
No, I think what, I think there's a distinction between when a crime has been committed, and in other words, when firearms have been used in the commission of a crime. But what you'll see with these bills, the 27 bills, and a number of them, basically will outlaw modern firearms, majority of modern firearms. The firearms which are currently used by people on a regular basis will become illegal. You would need a permit to purchase a firearm. There's a limit on number of rounds of ammunition you can purchase in a month. You'd have to have a permit to buy a gun, and a lot of the firearms, as I said, would then become illegal and would need to be moved out of the state, or destroyed, or turned in. So I think what we're looking at is there's a difference. And I looked into whether or not this particular ordinance, how this was playing out. My understanding is, is the other counties, and I have a list of them, but I don't have it with me, that have passed this, have vetted this in terms of, look, appears to be able to stand up to a number of challenges. That's my understanding. What I would like to do is, I would like us to have a discussion. I would like us to vote on this in terms of whether or not we would support this going forward. So that would be, that would be my recommendation.
You know, I think I'm kind of, Casey, and what you said is, I don't know if I'd really be wanting to do a resolution. The reason a resolution, the resolution bothers me is, what happens when we have a group of citizens that come forward that want Yamal County to be like a sanctuary county? How do we, how do we address those issues? Because the Constitution...
Commissioner, are you talking about a resolution or an ordinance?
A resolution.
A resolution is a non-binding decision.
Oh, I mean, I'd do a resolution. I wouldn't want to... Oh, I mean, I'd do a resolution, I wouldn't do, wouldn't want to do an ordinance.
Okay, so you're talking now about an ordinance and your concerns with that?
Concerned about an ordinance.
Right, I'm concerned about an ordinance, now a resolution that would allow us to back and go against those 27, or how many ever bills there are, I'm fine with a resolution, I don't feel as comfortable with an, with an ordinance, but.
And I, reading through this and then looking at some of the associated information and talking to county council, to be perfectly clear, I was like, hey, I'm concerned that this preempts state law, and state law is part of the Oregon Constitution, which is again, something that I swore to uphold and defend, and so it's, my concern is that I, I'm very much, I have sworn to uphold, defend the US and the state constitution, but to ask people in Yarmil County to not follow the rules of the state of Oregon are not something, I can go along with.
So did you, did you swear to uphold the laws of the state of Oregon if they are uncon, in other words, let's say they passed a law that said, anybody who's left-handed has to work on the work crew?
Oh my gosh, that gets two of us on it.
I know what she's getting at here.
I think she, I feel in a sense of this.
So, we passed a law, that the state of Oregon Legislature passes a law that says left-handed people need to be on a work crew, would you, would you uphold that law as a Commissioner?
If I felt very strongly in this case, because I would be also put on that work crew.
No, no.
I probably would sue the state of Oregon.
No, what I'm saying is, is when a body, a legislative body passes a law that is patently unconstitutional, you have upheld, you have sworn to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon, both of those constitutions make it clear that Second Amendment rights are, are preeminent, so if the state of, if the Legislature comes along and says that these, that these, that is passing a law that pretty much infringes, as the Second Amendment says, on those provisions and guarantees, would you then be supportive of, of laws that you said you were going to uphold, abridging?
Right. It sounds like you were going to say.
Well, I mean, I can speak to it differently.
No, I was just asking Commissioner, who would that?
And because I am not a lawyer, and I haven't trained as one, but I feel like it's really important to ask the staff members who are here about how we enforce and follow laws in the state of Oregon, I'm going to defer.
I mean, it might help to put it in the, in the context and the perspective of the sheriff, right? If, if the Legislature passes a law, until that law is challenged and the courts declare it unconstitutional, it is a law unless it is somehow, you know, immediately challenged and, and held in advance until the court proceedings are finalized, but, or concluded, it, it is a law, and, and what this would do would, would, would put the sheriff in a position of, of not being able to enforce laws that are still on the books until they're declared unconstitutional. So that's the bind, I think, that it potentially puts him and other peace officers, as this ordinance talks about.
Right.
Interestingly enough, I look at the number of sheriffs around the state and around the county that have also said that they were not going to enforce some of these, there are, there are a number of them, and this is, Second Amendment Sanctuary ordinances are being passed all over the country, I was amazed at how many are being passed and how many sheriffs are saying absolutely will not enforce, so I guess.
Well, the other thing to point out though, too, is that this wouldn't apply simply to new legislation that's being considered.
Right.
This, this would, this would apply to all local, state, and federal acts, laws, orders, rules, or regulations, so anything that's currently on the books, too, it's not just impacting new legislation.
And we had our, we had our sheriff go down to the Legislature last session and to testify against a bill which, by and large, he, they've all said, we're not going to enforce this, so I guess, you know, we can have this sort of the greater gun control discussion, people have argued it for the longest time, what I'm asking the Board to do is to, my question before you is, is can we put this on the agenda to vote on this in terms of how we would like to proceed?
Well, I think it's your right to, isn't it?
Yeah, you can put it on the, I have.
By ordinance 900?
Put it on the agenda.
So if we can.
But can I say a couple of the things before you, before you decide to head in that direction? I think what, if I'm reading this correctly, what this is actually doing is not asking the Board to adopt this ordinance, but is asking the Board to refer this ordinance to a vote of citizens.
Oh, I was wondering about that.
So if you look at the very end, it says it will be certified.
Something about that.
It, it is effective upon certification of approval by the voters.
And, and the difference is, is that you could have a signature gathering by a citizen, or you could have a Board, you can refer it, so that's what yours, what we're, what I'm asking is that the Board say, okay, let's refer this to the voters, do we want to give the voters the chance to weigh in on this and to, to make the decision instead of us making the decision for them?
And why, I understand that this was already submitted to the clerk's office and that they're at the stage of gathering signatures, is there a reason why they can't gather the 7,000 that are needed?
No, my, this is not the same person.
Oh, it's a different, oh, okay, I just had heard something about that.
It's a different document, but, so I don't know if there is a similar effort in the works right now to, to have this particular document in its current form put on the ballot with the clerk's office. I can certainly follow up with the clerk on that, and if the Board were interested in, in moving this forward and referring it, I would want to double check with the clerk as well and make sure that we follow all of the necessary steps to properly do that.
My understanding is, and I, I could be wrong, well, I know it's not the same individual, I believe it is not the same document.
It is not the same document, no.
So, so this sort of goes.
From the one that was, that one that was processed and they were in the process of gathering signatures for last year for the fall 18 election.
And nothing ever happened with it, I don't know the individuals, I didn't even know about it until I read it in the paper that they had done that or read it somewhere, I didn't even know that was happening, so I don't know who they are or what they did, but this is what's in front of us now, so do we want to vote, to send this to the voters as a Board to say, okay, voters, have at it?
I can see where the confusion's coming from, because I was going back through and reading the email that sent the request, and it, it was asking.
Yeah, to adopt.
To adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's the one I got, I actually don't think I got, well, did I?
I tell you the truth, when I read it, I didn't even pay attention to the last paragraph.
Oh, this is different, I got one from Nick Morate, when did this one come in?
This one came, the one, Mary, you gave was came from.
Oh, I guess I wasn't paying very good attention.
Troy and Jennifer Setti. It's the same, no, that, no, that's just a letter of support, we did get letters of support from Representative Post.
Right.
Representative Nierman, and some other testimony that they wanted to include, but, so, so here, the cover letter notwithstanding, do we want to move this, I would like to move this forward so we can vote on whether we should refer this to the voters, I guess.
I mean, I think that we, you have that right, and so we'll, we can, but I would think we should keep it on new business, right, rather than consent agenda. Don't you, don't you have the right to bring something?
Well, yeah, you can be, you can stay on the agenda, you can bring it up for the vote.
I guess it's not on the agenda technically.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It would go on the agenda as a, as a non-consent.
Or add-on.
Or an add-on, or go under new business when again?
We'll add it under other business, just like we just added the appointment to the Budget Committee, so we'll add those to, it'll be item numbers.
And I will, I'll check with the clerk to make sure there aren't any other steps that are necessary to take before the Board acts.
I'd be interested to know what the document was that whoever submitted it, did they have to give that to the clerk?
Last year?
Yeah, because he had to approve it.
Oh, it was, it was a lengthy process, yeah, they, they submitted it to the, to the clerk, and then the clerk worked with our office to determine whether or not it was actually sufficient and met the statutory requirements to be put on the ballot.
And one subject.
Then we prepared the one subject rule, then we prepared a summary, then we prepared a statement, and then it went to the DA's office for some work, and then it came back, and we went through that entire process, and I believe, and I will confirm with Brian, that, that it was finalized and authorized for them to begin gathering signatures, and then that's where action stopped, I guess.
Yeah, I, I never heard it.
At least that's what I'm aware of.
Yeah, because I think philosophically, you know, if we were a home rule county where we basically had our own constitution, as a home rule constitution, then I think we can control things a little bit more because it's, we can't preempt state law, but we can make our own, whereas I think as a general law county, I, I don't know, I feel uncomfortable, I, I feel very comfortable putting it in front of the voters, that's not an issue, but I feel very, I feel uncomfortable about how we decide we want to take certain pieces of the Constitution of the state and of the federal government, and of the state and of the federal government, how we want to take the Constitution and interpret that as a local body, so any of those kind of issues, I don't like, but I certainly agree with that, whether it be initiative petition or whether it be the Board decide to do it, I'm certainly agreeing that if we, a fair way to do it is put it on, put it on the ballot for the voters, just how we do that.
Can't they just do it? The folks who are clearly very organized, because I've received 50 emails, most of them are on the same.
Only 50?
They're asking us to, I guess what this says is, and we're not asking you to rubber stamp this and go, yeah, it's good to go, we're asking you to say, would you, by virtue of, of an action of the Board, agree that this thing becomes, goes on the ballot?
And I'd like to clarify, you earlier talked about how this was a conversation about gun control, but this is really a conversation about the power of the Board of Commissioners to influence things, and to have our own conversation about how we interpret laws, and I don't, like, I, I am a gun owner, I'm, I'm happy to stand by the Second Amendment and a lot of other ones, but, all of them technically, but in this case, it's, we're having a conversation now about how we promote or influence voters, and if we choose to put this to a vote of voters, we are saying that we want it.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
I think that that's, I think that the impression that's created is.
No, I think the other impression, I, I think, Casey, it's a little bit different impression, here's what I, what I think, if it's not done through the initiative petition process, and we put it on the ballot, the Commissioners decide to put it on the ballot, we're going to be hard pressed on future issues that people brought us, and they're going to say, you put that on the ballot?
Yeah.
Why don't you put this on the ballot?
Yes, I agree.
And I don't know what it costs to put it on, I know the clerk said it's not real cheap to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, I agree with your thought about that.
Well, the other, the other option is, there are Boards of Commissioners that have passed.
Can just adopt it.
Have adopted this ordinance, so we, I'm guessing that probably wouldn't happen here, so in, in lieu of passing.
That's a great smile.
The ordinance ourselves, what we, I, I would just suggest that we put it on, let the voters decide.
Well, you know, and I don't, as I say, I don't have any problem with that, as long as we're all aware that if we do that, we're probably going to be flooded with the Board putting other things.
I've got a couple that I might.
And you know what, I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, when we've got an issue, to put it on the ballot.
I, I, no, I, I agree with that, we just have to be aware of that, but I, I agree with that, and we have to look at those carefully and say, what do we want to put on the ballot and what don't we want to put on the ballot, but, but I'd like to know what the cost is of putting it on, but I'm not opposed to putting it on the ballot whatsoever.
And we can also say.
And I can, I can, I can try and confirm some of those cost issues with the clerk, but I think it's critical to keep in mind that if you do put this on the ballot and it passes, then it becomes local law.
But then the citizens.
If it's, if it's, if it's constitutional or not, then again, it would be best in my mind to see if we couldn't answer those questions or at least try to identify some of those concerns before referring something and going through an entire election cycle with, with citizens possibly believing that if this is adopted, this is going to become a law, and it is legal, and it's going to be enforceable when we don't really know yet. I would hate to disappoint people who are very, very excited about this, only to find out that once it passes, there really is nothing in effect that the sheriff can or will be able to do, given again, the bind that I think this and the other ordinances that we've looked at in the past, put him into, which is, he's taken an oath to uphold the Constitution, and this tells him he can't enforce any laws of the, of local, state, or federal that involve the enforcement regulation of firearms.
Wow, I think the wording in this would have to be specific to that.
But again, and then the other issue is, we didn't draft this.
We didn't draft this, yes.
So how do we go about changing something that's been submitted to us?
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, is we see all the time, and I think, I think we're all aware of the fact that laws are passed all the time that wind up being challenged.
They, they, they may be challenged and they may be found unconstitutional, but until they're found unconstitutional by the Court of Last Appeal, those laws are in effect until the Legislature changes them or the courts strike them down.
Yeah, I, I think we see this, I think, think that we see this all the time, and for us to, so I think, you know, again, we could run this around.
Another thing to consider, too, is it may be helpful before you make this decision to hear from the sheriff.
You know, I sent him and Emily Williams an email, and I haven't heard back from them.
Yeah, and I spoke to him yesterday about this, and he, he said he would be willing to come to the Board.
Sure, well, maybe he can come tomorrow, on Thursday, and we can basically make a decision then, but I would like to see this on the agenda or as an add-on for us to vote on either up or down.
So I would say, if we do some work between now and Thursday, depending on what we hear from the sheriff and depending on how many other answers we can get, at least consider possibly setting this over for a week or two, depending on how many unanswered questions might still remain after we hear from the sheriff on Thursday, because there's a lot, there's a lot here, and I just want to make sure that the Board makes this decision with all of the most important information.
And I think it would be good, perhaps, if, if, I'll give you the information from the other counties.
That would be super.
And they've gone through a lot of this already.
Yeah, because I think we need to vet, do our due diligence.
They've done, yeah, we might as well.
And whether we rely on that information from other counties or what, but I think we need to vet, and if, where that information comes from, if it comes from other counties so we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, just so I can clarify, where are we at? What are we putting on the agenda for Thursday?
And do we have a right, or do, because this isn't on as a new business, can we block it from happening until we have everybody in a row, or do we have to?
Any Commissioner can bring an item forward to the agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay, I would like to bring this forward for Thursday.
Okay.
I don't have a real problem.
Does someone want to confirm with the petitioner whether they do want it adopted as an ordinance, or if they want it referred to the voters, if there is still confusion among the Board?
Well, I.
You want me to reach out to them?
I think if the opponents, if they want it adopted as an ordinance, I feel, I feel comfortable putting it in front of the people, I'd never feel comfortable a county actually adopting this ordinance ourselves.
So would you feel comfortable putting something that, that the county has not drafted in front of the people?
Well, that's why I think we're looking at you to say, what, how should this be crafted to where we're only addressing those single, not all the different laws? Because I think you're exactly right, Christian, you know, that it's any law.
To, to that point, to the, on the new legislation, if the Legislature passes it, it's a law until it's held by the courts to be unconstitutional or the, or the Legislature changes it, so the, the sheriff and any peace officer will be in the same box with new legislation and existing legislation and laws.
Mary, do you have a pretty good idea of all the bills that this applies to what the, are, they all, have they all had hearings, are they all on committee, how much have died?
They haven't had hearings.
If this were adopted, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be, it would, it would affect all of the existing laws, and we don't know if any of these proposals are actually going to become law.
Yeah, we don't know, that's the issue, we don't know.
Right.
So would you, would you want to take law, would you want to take steps to, to put this into law before you know what the new laws might be?
Well, I, I think that's the point.
Or rephrase this to say, it only applies to new legislation and not to existing laws?
No, because I think there's been concern about existing laws, as our sheriff has told us.
I agree.
He testified against bills that have passed in the last session.
I agree.
So it's nothing new.
Are there current laws that Tins Wenson is not following?
There are laws that he has concerns with, and you'll have to ask him specifically that.
Okay, because you nodded, as though you understood, but if there was something that passed and he chooses to.
Senate Bill 941 is what Sheriff Svenson testified against, Ron Noble came and spoke against, law enforcement, by and large, had concerns about that particular bill, but that's just one.
And it's in law.
Was there a bill in, in the 17th session that he also testified against? Because I think 941 was actually in 2015, am I remembering that correctly?
Was it 2015?
I think so.
It might be, because if.
Might be 17, there was another.
I think there were some other bills in 17, too.
You'd have to, you'd have to, yeah, he did testify, I was down there when he testified, a number of sheriffs were testifying that day.
So it sounds like he is already comfortable with not enforcing, or we'll ask him if he's comfortable with not enforcing already.
You know, before we decide what we're going to do and put it on the ballot and stuff, and I know you want to put it on Thursday's, Thursday's agenda, I'd like, I'd like to hear from the sheriff.
I would, too.
Before we do, before we do that, and what's his issue, you know, what are all his different issues, if they're good or not good, or.
Maybe he can come on Thursday.
That's what I said, I'd like to him come on Thursday.
But, all right. But, all right.
And that's why I asked if it's committed, because if it hasn't, if most of them haven't even had committee meetings yet, they won't go to the floor for another probably, when they may march another month.
Well, these bills, when they, when they set a hearing date, it's right now.
Yeah, they set a hearing, but that doesn't mean it's going to come to the floor right away.
No, but what I'm saying is, is these, there are so many of them that it's, it's, you know, I think it's important to get ahead of this. So, okay.
We'll get this out to you.
Thank you. All right.
One other thing along those lines, I was just thinking, there are lots of major issues before the county and before the county administrator, I'm sorry, before the county, the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
You freaked out for a moment, sorry.
I don't have anything in front of me.
And I've often wondered about that, about the difference, like, why, why we encourage voter, voters to weigh in on something rather than us weighing in on them. Like I had during the election, people come to me and ask, well, why don't, why don't we put, the trail was an example, on the ballot, so.
I've heard that a lot, too.
And, yeah, I'm sure you have.
I, I don't think there, and you know what?
But I just wonder, like, which things do we decide and which, how do we decide?
I didn't decide.
As I can tell you, Casey, is...
I would have passed the ordinance.
Right.
But I can count, I'm only one.
Yeah, I can tell you, all my experience even with the city years, you know, I can't tell you how, you know, or why, you know, but there is certain things that you look at that say, you know, this should go in front of the voters.
Right.
And there are several things, if you feel not uncomfortable, if you feel uncomfortable making a particular decision, then chances are it could go up. But most of, I can tell you my own experience, and this is no, no proof, I mean, it's no data, that all of the ones as, as mayor that I've had to deal with and break a tie of the commission on, put counsel on, have all been social issues. And, and I look at this and they've had to do with laws and, you know, like whether we fluoridate our water, whether, whether we do this, whether we don't do that, and that's, I, so I don't have a good answer, Casey, how you make that decision.
That's a really good question.
It is a good question.
Thank you.
Because we have representative.
I feel like we should talk about it sometime. Because that's a really interesting, we're, we are late, but, but I think that's a really interesting comment about the, the times when you've had it.
So anyway, so you have that, what we're going to do Thursday, Claire? Okay.
Glad you do.
If not, if not, I'll clarify.
If not.
Okay.
Yeah, us old baby boomers can figure it out. That, we, normally we go through commissioner updates, but we have also those on Thursday. Would we like to wait till Thursday to do our commissioner updates? Do you have anything around port, Mary?
I just want to say, did a Women in Politics Forum with Congresswoman Bonamici and Representative Drazen last night at Linfield, and it was, it was a lot of fun. The economic forum today that the chamber put on, McMinnville Chamber, showed that we are below the state average in terms of unemployment, and they said that at that 3% it's unprecedented in 15 years, 50 years we haven't seen this good an economy. And it was a good, it was a good presentation.
Yeah, the only thing, I'll, I'll piggyback that is, Monday, Monday we had a morning session over in Salem put on by SEDCor and we had investors there, we had consultants there, and we had government officials who talked all about opportunity zones and what opportunity zones can bring. And as we know, there's four opportunity zones in Yamhill County. Sheridan has an opportunity zone, Willamette has a big opportunity zone, McMinnville has an opportunity zone which takes up all of Three Mile Lane and Arndt. Newburgh has an opportunity zone, and the whole purpose is to get private investment in, to develop and put off the capital, put off the capital gains. The problem with it now is they're trying to get an extension because to make all this happen, you have about two years to make all this happen. And they want something that's ready to go, well, not a lot of people have things ready to go. But I think you're going to see opportunity zones become a big thing in the future, how you, how you do industrial development, commercial and development, and hopefully housing developments too in opportunities, in opportunity zones.
That'd be great.
So, but that was, that was very, and then our EDAC meeting yesterday that SEDCor put on, we had about, I think, 19 people there that sit on the committee and did two and a half hours of brainstorming about how we're going to approach it. Hopefully by, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a present, presentation about what they're coming up with and they're getting, they've asked for volunteers for the committee that are going to score all of our applications for, for the grants and everything, and I think there's a lot of good people that are involved in that.
Excellent.